Hey, everybody. I just wanted to make a quick announcement. I'm on day three of a migraine. And it seems to be okay right now, but I don't know if I can last the whole meeting, so I may need to jump off early. I just wanted to let you all know that. Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that, Amanda. Thanks. It comes and goes. Right now it's okay, but staring at a screen for a while might make it come back in some force, so. But, uh, but I mean, I'm okay, I'm okay right now, but thank you for your well wishes.
Try not to talk so much, that can only help.
Yeah. Quick meeting, you guys, quick meeting tonight.
It's five o'clock.
Well, you know what that means.
All right. Trying to figure out, get my view back here.
I don't think I've seen Luke coming yet, Jeannie, but he usually comes in.
Okay.
Right as we get started.
Luke's here.
Oh, hi Luke, sorry, I missed you there. Fast and furious, everyone coming at the same time.
All right, so it is five o'clock, everybody's ready. I will, um, call a meeting to order, today is Monday, January 18th, 2021, this is the Village of Oregon Village Board Meeting. I have asked for roll call, please. Randy Glisch.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stitch.
Here.
Bollig.
Bollig is here.
Horton.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you, all right, so at this point of the agenda, this is community input. So this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to us on items, anything that's not on our board agenda tonight. We can't act on anything because it's not listed on the agenda, but we can for sure listen to any questions or issues or information that folks have and always put things on a future agenda. So is there anyone from the community tonight here in the meeting that would like to address the board? That seems like a no, all right, speak up. Something changes, we can always address you. Um. Let's see. Oh, Jeff, do you want to do the engineer thing now?
Yeah, that'd be great, as long as it's under 8E, if we could move 8E up and then maybe we could let Ben have the rest of his evening.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna move 8E up here so that our engineers don't have to sit here for a couple of hours. So this is a discussion of possible action regarding Town and Country Task Order Number 11. This is the wastewater treatment preliminary design, we have a recommended motion to approve the task order number 11 from Town and Country Engineering for services not to exceed $97,500. Would someone like to make that motion again on the table, please?
Me, I'll move.
All right, thank you, so a motion by Glisch.
I'll second you.
Second by Horton, thank you. Jeff or the engineer?
Yeah, so you know, we brought, uh, previous meeting, we brought the final approval letter from DNR for the facility plan. So big thank you to Ben and their team for, for getting us to that point. And now, as planned, we're taking this to the, kind of the preliminary design phase. So this is the, this is the next phase where they take all the information from the facility at all of the hyper detailed information on facilities, the site, our equipment, and then start the preliminary design for what would be Phase 1 of our plant improvements that we have planned. So Ben, I don't know if you have any other comments on, you know, what, what we will accomplish with this?
Yeah, and ultimately, just to clarify that a little bit, this is actually what we proposed was doing preliminary design on all of the phases so that we can outline the scope for those, because again, just as a refresher, there's four phases of construction proposed in your facilities plan. So get the base, kind of outline of those figured out now so that as you move into detailed design and eventually construction with these things, that you know you're not putting a new building where a different new building needs to go, or putting a new building where a new pipe needs to go. So the intention was we'd get a rough outline of every structure that's going to be touched, make sure we show in some sort of a drawing format, the, the intended improvements for all of your existing and new structures, and then kind of put together a bit of a package at the end so that five or 10 years down the road, when you're doing subsequent phases after Phase 1, you kind of know what the starting point was for all of this, so that's, that's the generic outline, and I can certainly address any specific questions that anyone would have as well.
Any questions from board members on this? Doesn't look like it. All right, are we ready to vote?
They're just happy, Ben, you're not going to talk about the whole facility plan again.
You're going to short. You said you guys have hours of conversation ahead of you.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, so for the public watching, this is a, this is a large dollar amount, but this is a project that we have spent the last year discussing, so I'm comfortable with asking for a vote on this, so we have a motion then to approve this task order, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much for being here, Ben, appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeannie, for moving that up.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, so then we're going to go back to four public appearance. First item is item A, this is a discussion of possible action regarding approved the tax increment grant agreement. This is a Lake Stone Affordable Housing Development. We have a recommended motion to approve the agreement, would someone like to make that motion? Getting started. All right, so a motion by Jacobson. I will second it, so second by Carpenter. All right. Mike, or who wants to lead this one up?
Maybe Matt, just do an overview of it, please, I've been through this a couple of times, but maybe Matt should just do a quick overview.
I'm here, and I'm just pulling it up now, just to make it a little easier for me to, to do the overview, I'll be ready in about 15 seconds.
So while Matt is getting this ready, this is another thing to the public, this is something that we've been talking about many, many times. So if anyone has questions that's watching, just let us know. I see that we have, we have, I think, one of the developers is online too, if you have any questions for them.
Okay, I'm ready. So I think everyone knows that the, the proposed development here is a multi-family rental housing project that is designed and plans to be one that provides affordable housing in the village, meaning apartment units that are going to be units that require individuals to meet certain income qualification thresholds to be eligible to, to rent the apartments. And there will be, in fact, caps on the amount of rent that can be charged for these apartments, so this is not a market rate project, this is a workforce housing project or an affordable housing project. And that's one of the reasons that, that's one of the reasons that tax incremental financing is being requested here because the revenue that can be generated by these apartments is going to be limited under the terms of this agreement and under the terms of the financing that is going to be used to construct this. In addition to TIF funding, the developer here is working with WIDA, the Wisconsin, with the Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority to obtain tax credit financing for this project, so this project will be financed through tax credits, TIF and TIF. And that's how basically it would be, you know, viable from a financial standpoint to, to make this project work. So that's kind of at a high level here, so the TIF funding in this agreement, if we go down to section B on page 3, yep, there we go, development incentive grant, so this agreement provides for what we call a municipal revenue obligation to be issued to the developer. It would not be issued until upon completion of the project and the issuance of an occupancy permit for the project, so the developer will have to manage the process of getting construction financing without TIF and actually long-term financing without TIF. This is a municipal revenue obligation, we sometimes call this, you know, pay-as-you-go financing or a pay-go TIF, meaning the village is not going to need to borrow any money to fund this TIF funding. Instead, the funding will be payable solely out of tax increment that the project itself generates. So the municipal revenue obligation would be issued in the principal amount of $2,755,797 and will be payable solely out of tax increment that the project itself actually generates, payable at a rate of 5% interest. Just so you know, that amount was arrived at through a, an evaluation process, a financial evaluation process that was assisted by your financial consultant, Ellers. And we discussed that particular issue at earlier meetings where Ellers presented their analysis that showed that this level of TIF funding was needed to make the project viable from a rate of return standpoint. So that's the TIF funding that would be provided to the project. If you scroll down to paragraph C, we'll see the developer's obligations. And the main obligation here is to provide affordable housing. This, in this case, the requirement is to provide not fewer than six three-bedroom units, not fewer than 42 bedroom, two-bedroom units, not fewer than 66 one-bedroom units, and then the balance of the units would, could be studio housing units. The total number of units is to be not less than 145, I believe. Yes. The scrolling down to paragraph E, these are the conditions that need to be satisfied under this agreement before the parties are required to move forward. So paragraph 1, that's the approval of this agreement, paragraph 2 requires a document called a land use restriction agreement, or sometimes it's called a LURA, that to be recorded. And that's the instrument that would be used to regulate the income limits and the rental limits that would apply to this property. The LURA is something that WIDA will require as part of the tax credit process, and essentially the village is piggybacking on that process, so the village is not going to have to do the work associated with monitoring compliance with the income and rental requirements of the LURA, WIDA will do that under the LURA. But the village is saying that it will not issue the municipal revenue obligation unless that land use restriction agreement is recorded, and so that's how, that's how that works. Under paragraph 3, we have a requirement that the village will need to complete a study of the capacity of the village's sanitary sewer system to serve the property and the project, and if the village determines that the system needs improvements to increase capacity, then the village would need to approve a plan for financing the cost of those improvements that would be acceptable to the village. If there are questions about that, I'll let Jeff speak to the questions about the, that technical review, but there's just a recognition here that we are going to be studying that issue, and if we determine that additional improvements are needed, that issue's going to have to be resolved before the village would be required to provide funding. Next, paragraph 4, the developer is going to need to obtain village approval of a, of a specific implementation plan for the property. A general development plan, I believe, has already been approved, so they have the zoning in place, but they need the more detailed specific implementation plan approved. And the final issue here is that there's going to be a need for the maximum number of years that this TIF district may be kept open to be extended through the year 2042, I think you'll recall that, that we had an earlier meeting or a discussion at an earlier meeting with Ellers and the developer about the need to extend the life of this TIF district in order to generate enough tax increment to fund this project. And so that condition would need to still be satisfied before the parties would be obligated under this agreement. And this agreement gives us, until gives the parties through July 1 of 2021 to satisfy all of those conditions. And that is it, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks for that overview, Matt, that was, that was very good. What questions do we have, board members? Yes, Jerry Bollig.
Thank you. I think I have a question for Jeff Rowland, that has to do with the possible improvements to the sewer system. Does that include water also, Jeff, water and sewer?
Our water, we're not concerned with the water capacity, we have plenty of water capacity in that area, because that's Rooker Milkyard engineers have been watching that.
Okay.
It's just do a deal with the sewer.
Okay, so the sewer, possible sewer improvements, if those are necessary, who pays for those improvements, the residents of the village, or does the developer have to come in on that?
More than likely the, the developer, now in a, in a situation like this, I mean, because this, remember, if you remember the study that's being done is actually being split three ways. One-third with Forward Development, or sorry, one-third with Hofer, one-third, Hofer Development, which is Autumn Ridge, one-third with this developer, Lake Stone, and then one-third with the village. And, you know, we'll have to look at, depending on what direction and, you know, where the deficiencies are, we'll be having to look and, and if there, if there is a deficiency, determine if the village is partially responsible for that, but more than likely, it's mostly developer-driven funding. However, you know, with this being almost, they are at the funding max. Mike, how would you describe this, I mean, I guess if, if there's, and if there's $200,000 where that needs to be done, they, they would probably have to have $200,000 of additional funding for it.
And one, and one of the things the village could do, village board could consider, because it's an affordable housing project, is actually potentially funding it out of the Affordable Housing Fund.
Yeah.
Because, because right now, the project really cannot generate any more increments, so that, that'd be a decision for the board. That's, that's just an initial thought, you know, we got to wait for the study to be done, and and then we'll bring it to the board for further discussion.
And I should, Mike, Mike, just leave.
We don't have any known, known problems right now, but, you know, we're also adding quite a few, you know, we're adding quite a few units to that area.
Right, is it possible, if that is necessary, that any other future projects would benefit from those sewer improvements?
Maybe, and that's where, you know, that's where we, as a village, would come in and play a little more, but I don't think so, this is pretty much built-out area over here.
That's what I thought, okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I don't foresee us, I mean, we could, but sometimes when we do things like this, we do what's called a chargeback, where the village runs the money and then somebody hooks into the system or gets the benefit of the system, you charge in that, but
Okay.
I think just right, I'm not sure who else would be doing that, Jerry, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Mike, and the, the main thing I'm taking away from this discussion is the fact that the residents of the village, at least at this time, do not bear any cost for this project.
Well, I, I'm not saying we would, I'm not sure we can say that, because there's, there are areas of the village that's going into this area that has nothing to do with new development, right, Jeff?
Correct, correct.
So, so Jerry, I would, I would be careful saying that.
Yeah.
Okay. I think it's fair to say, though, that no decisions are being made tonight about funding this infrastructure that would, yeah, so there, there, there will need, this issue will be studied, I, I think it's already in the works. And, and so to the extent that there will be any expenditures on infrastructure, that issue will be coming back to the board, and, and we just don't have enough information yet tonight to know exactly what that could look, what that looks like.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Gotcha, sounds good, Randy, go ahead.
Mike, you mentioned the fund, the affordable housing, is there, just, just, I, I know this is, we're, we have to study it, but is there funds already, or there will be funds available if we have to look at that?
Well, the, the village created that fund a couple of years ago, and we
Yeah, and we gave some to Genesis.
Yes, yep, so I think it's like about 300,
Okay.
maybe at least like, like 360.
So there's some funds.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Sure. Other questions from board members? All right. All right, so are we ready to vote on this? All right, so we have a motion as second to approve the tax increment grant agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, all right, thank you, everyone. All right, going on to 4B, this is a discussion of possible action regarding a banking agreement and review of proposal from one community bank. We have the current state bank of Cross Plains rate, which is 0.2%, which is the 0.1 LGIP and 0.1, which is bank rate. And then we have a proposed one community bank rate of 0.36%, which is made up of a 0.1 LGIP and 2, and 0.26 for the bank rate, so we have a recommended motion to approve the agreement with one community bank contingent on receiving required exhibits and provide required 90 days notice of termination to the state bank of Cross Plains. So would someone like to make this motion to get this on the table?
I'll move, Jeannie.
All right, motion by Glisch and second by Bollig. All right.
You have a question too.
Yeah, for sure.
Lisa, just a, just a quick question, the, the, the new proposal from one community bank, my question is, how does that compare to what we actually had from Cross Plains before they, they changed the rate from, for us?
State Baker Cross Plains before they wanted to reduce their rate, it was the LGIP plus 1.45%.
Okay.
So we lost 1.35%.
Right, and, and with the new one, we, we've gained some back.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I could just interject also briefly, the agreement that the board has in front of it tonight, with the exception of the, the interest rate change, is virtually identical to the, the other, the agreement you had with State Bank of Cross Plains. There still are a couple of exhibits that we're, we're going to need to talk to the bank about that we had in place with State Bank of Cross Plains, and we just need to determine whether there would be any potential. For example, one of them is a form of a letter of credit that could be used, be a federal home loan bank letter of credit. If they choose to use that approach for securing the village's deposits, we'll need to work with them to to attach the appropriate form of the letter of credit, similarly, if they choose to use a public deposit security agreement, we would need to put together the appropriate form of exhibit for that, but the, the agreement itself is essentially the same agreement that you have or had, with the exception of the interest rate.
All right, thank you, Matt, other questions, board members, yes, Cory?
Are we kind of at the bottom of what our interest rate will do with our current lender?
The current lender, um, we were only about six months into our three-year contract with them, and they wanted to reduce the interest rate. So we kind of held them off until about the one-year anniversary, and then we did the change at that point. So about of, in August of this, of 2020, is when the interest rate that they were offering went from the 1.45 to the 0.1. You can't really get a lot lower than 0.1, so I it's just crazy how, you know, it's
Yeah, I guess I thought it had stepped down in a couple steps, and I guess we haven't made the step yet, is what you're saying.
They gave us the option of stepping down, but we opted to continue with the 1.45 for that 90-day period, and then we, yeah, and then we dropped off to the 0.1 at that point. We figured we'd have more money in the bank for that 90 days than we would after that, so we wanted to capitalize on it during the 90-day period before they dropped it down to 0.1.
Okay, and how much staff time do you think it's going to take to make this changeover?
Considering that we just did a changeover about two years ago, I think it's still pretty fresh in everybody's memories of what we have to do. I mean, when State Baker Cross Plains came in, they did training in-house for like one day. We'll have to, we'll have to try and split that up, because we have our staff split right now, so they might have to come in two half-days or something like that to work with the staff that are there each of those two different days. I, I don't foresee it taking as long, I mean, the hardest thing is making sure that you get all of your automatic deposits changed over to the new bank, and that, that's probably the, the one thing that will take the longest is to try and capture all those, but it's just a matter of going back through the bank statements, checking on what comes in at what point, and then getting those changed over with whoever that vendor, or if it's the state or whatever, they have automatic payments that we get from them too, so I, I don't think it's going to take as long. And we don't have many elections this year, so that's why we kind of waited as long as we did.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Any other comments on this, or ready to vote? All right, so we have a motion as second to approve the agreement with one community bank contingent on receiving those exhibits and then provide the 90 days notice termination to State Baker Cross Plains, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, all right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I just want to thank Steve and Liz for working with us on getting this rolling so that we can get things changed over and capitalize on a, you know, a little bit higher interest rate than what we're getting right now. I don't know, did Steve have something to say?
So if, if it's okay with President Carpenter, I just would like to say it's our, it's our pleasure, we're thrilled to help the village in any way possible. So i- if it's okay with President Carpenter, I just would like to say it's our, it's our pleasure. We're thrilled to help the village in any way possible. And this is a wonderful moment for one community bank. So you may have seen me clapping a few moments ago. I'm very excited and appreciate the opportunity on behalf of one community bank to serve the village. Thanks for the trust and faith you put in us.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Those kind of words. Appreciate it. All right. Okay. So then, thank you. Thank you, one community bank. We will keep moving forward. Uh, so next we have a public hearing to discuss. This is item four C. To discuss on consider approval of an application for a class B fermented malt beverage. And a class B intoxicating liquors is the class B combination. Um, alcohol beverage license for the property at one, one, three North Main Street. Doing business as the wine reserve. All right. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And then this, um, first thing we'll do is have some staff reports. Anything? Staff reports?
Peggy, you want to do this? Are you there?
Oh, hey Peggy, you're muted. Oh, there we go.
I was not really prepared for this. Sorry about that.
Well, you want me to, you want me to jump in here?
If you don't mind, I apologize.
So, so you have the, you have the application in front of you. And, uh, this is the, the business that wants to go into the, what used to be the old bank. It's right next to the, to the, uh, BMO Harris Bank. It's just to the north on that, on the, on Main Street. And it's, uh, they want to go with, do what a business is called a wine reserve. It's been to the planning commission last week. Uh, Thursday, the commission recommended approval for the CUP. And now this is in front of the board for their, uh. License. In front of you. And the inspections have been done. And, uh, I think, Jeannie, I think the only. Not, I'm not gonna say concerns, but two issues that came up at the plan commission meeting was the. Serving of, of people on the sidewalk, you, you know, using the right of way, uh, to, to do it and, and Jeff and at least explain that. We're developing a right of way permit that, that, you know, that would be looked at separately. And I think one of the commission members had a question about the fencing around the patio. Uh, but the height of the patio, I'm sorry, the height of the fencing, but other than that, the commission was in, uh, um, agreement. They thought it was a good business.
Yes, yep, I would agree, agree with that.
Yep.
All right. And then next, uh, in the public hearing process is petitioners comments. Um, did the, the guy, I know, um, I saw, uh. What's on here? If you, gentlemen, want to speak at all?
Yeah.
Saw you guys. Oh, yes.
Hi.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi. Thanks.
Sure. I'm, uh, Steve Dieter and, uh, Todd Malkook and I are excited about the opportunity to, uh, open a wine bar in Oregon. Um, we think it'll be an asset to the downtown area and, uh, we feel fortunate to have, uh. To have a great venue, uh, with so much character and in such a great location. And the response from the community has been positive. And, uh, we're happy to address any questions or concerns you might have. Thanks.
Uh, questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Um, now we have public comments. All right. So is there anyone from the public on this Zoom call that, um, would like to make a comment? You can. Speak up and we will recognize you. Not seeing anyone. Wave their hands at me. All right. Public, let me know if something changes. Uh, so then we will go on to village board comments. All right. Board members, what questions do you have on this or comments?
Me. The only one I, I had was the, and Mike addressed it. I saw that the, the, um, sidewalk. Uh, seating and I know that th- there's, there's future things coming up too, and I. I just know you addressed it, Mike. We're gonna address that.
Yeah.
Fine.
Yeah, actually, we're having a, a meeting tomorrow. Lisa's in the process of upgrading or updating our right of way permit. And, uh, I, because I think, you know, you have to look at each situation. We, we use the Firefly as an example where the seating is just, you know, immediately adjacent to the building. Where the seating and other places, it, you know, like sunnies is out because it's a, it's a larger curb area. So. Um, I think having a right of way permit will be helpful. We'll, we'll look at it.
And, and so, Mike, we're not thinking that, um, I mean, people are still gonna be able to walk on the sidewalk, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
And they don't have to walk in the street or something.
Oh, no, 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 no. We would never, that's, that's part of the, uh, issues. You review it to make sure that you're not, you're not impacting the use of the sidewalk. Yep. Yep. Yep.
All right. Board members, other comments, questions on this? Yes, Jenna?
I just got a clarification. Um, I was looking at the, um, permanent application in, um. Line number ten, it says that the, uh, estimated. Occupancy, I'm probably gonna give the word language wrong. I apologize. Estimated occupancy is thirty five inside and thirty six outside, but then in, um. Line or question number forty four, it says forty eight inside and forty eight outside. Um, so just was looking for clarification on which. Uh, which one it was.
So when I was filling out, excuse me, when I was filling out the application. The, with the way I read it, the, the thirty five and thirty six was, um. What we're gonna have for seating. And then in the last one, it, it made it sound more like, like legal. Um. Capacity. And so I made some estimates based on some things I found on the internet as far as, you know, take the bar stools, subtract out the. Uh, walkway areas and then, you know, remaining areas, take fifteen square feet per person, something like that. Um, so I was making an estimate, assuming that the, uh, fire department would, uh, come up with what our actual real capacity is, but so I was estimating. It that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? All right, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing. So though, then, um, with the board members, we can either, we could have more discussion. Um, or if someone is feeling comfortable. These can make a, um, emotion to approve the application for the class B. Permitted malt beverage and the class B intoxicating liquor, the class B combo.
Jeannie, I'm with approval.
All right. We have a motion by Glish. Second by Stitch. Thank you, Luke. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Congratulations, gentlemen. You have a liquor license.
Thank you, everyone.
Step, step four of nine hundred and sixty-two of opening a business.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. It looks like our next item, um, uh, is table until the February, to our February first meeting. Is that still correct, Mike?
That's, that's correct. Yep.
All right. So our February first meeting, we'll have a follow-up, um, a discussion with, uh, uh, Pete Paganco and. Jamie Bush regarding headquarters. All right. Item five, approval minutes. We have none. Item six, we have approval of vouchers. Um. Do we have?
Yep. No bills to pay tonight.
We have no bill. What? Whatever happened?
We stopped doing that now.
Did, did Jeff lose his credit card or what?
We cut him off.
Notice the only person we ever pick on is Jeff.
That's all right.
Everyone else follows the rules.
That's not true.
Oh, we're just giving you a hard time. All right. Item seven, proclamation announcements, board comments. Do we have board comments tonight?
Oh, Bollig has a board comment.
Yes, please go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity to do a, uh, what I'm gonna. Call a friendly rebuttal to a letter I saw. In the Oregon Observer, a letter to the editor. And I don't, I, you know, I've been in this community my whole life. I don't think I've ever responded to one of these, but this one. I, I, I have to because. It, uh, the title of the article is spend less on library and more on roads. And it leads. The reader to believe that. The village staff and the village board. Does not take care of their roads. And honestly, that is so far from being true that I have to respond. Um. The, uh, the writer, I'm not gonna mention the writer's name because again, this is friendly. And I, I'm just addressing this so that any readers. Can get a correct view of what really happens here in town. Every fall we do a budget. And as part of that budget process. We update our capital plan, which, and roads are a big part of that capital plan. And we move roads, you know, we repair roads, uh, as needed. Because, uh, I think Jeff Ral. And his predecessor, 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 uh, would actually do a visual inspection of the roads and then rate them. And pardon? And, and the, the worst roads going into the budget. And I'll give an example. Between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty. We spent seven and a half million dollars on roads in the village. Twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-two, we're gonna spend another ten to twelve million dollars on roads. Now, it'd be great to fix all the roads right away. But the property taxes would increase so much that it would cause too much financial stress and pain for the residents. So I think what we're doing now works. And the writer of the article mentioned Jamesville and Main Street specifically. And I'm gonna, I, I just wanna let everyone know that in twenty twenty-one, this year. We are gonna fix North Main Street. And again, that's a joint project with Dean County. And then in twenty twenty-two, we're gonna do Jamesville. Street, uh, south down to, um. Uh, what's that street, Mike?
Perry Parkway.
Perry Parkway, yeah. So. It, you know, I'm, I just hope everybody understands that we're really staying on top of these road projects and. We've got the best interests of the residents in mind when we do this, both in safe roads. And affordable property taxes. So Mike or Jeff, do you want to respond in any way?
Add to juries.
I was just gonna add one quick thing, Jerry, is just so people understand. Jamesville Street and North Main Street are still, um, owned, maintained and, and, uh. And cared for by Dane County. So those are, those are technically not our jurisdiction. But we do have a plan to work with Dane County to assume jurisdiction of those roads and the care of those roads. Once they're upgraded and that's what will happen the next coming years. So we do get a lot of complaints about North Main Street. We, every, even Dane County knows it's really bad. That's why it's such a priority this next year.
Thanks, Randy. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Jerry, just wanna add something. I saw that, I also saw the letter to the editor and the, the thing that popped in my head is. A, a good example was, was Lincoln Road that we actually worked with the town. Of Oregon to, to do a much, a much needed, uh, you know. Reconstruction of Lincoln Road and Perry Parkway and all the, all the filling of the pottles. So. I, I saw that the editor also, and I thought the same thing. It's like, we, we really try to do our best and we've done, we do, we do as much as we can each year. With our budget.
So I'll close by saying, you know, the, the editor, the writer of this article can put away their mouth guard. Uh, this year because. At least if they're on North Main and then next year they can, uh, throw the mouth guard out the window because they won't be hurting their teeth anymore. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. Other board comments? All right, staff comments. Uh, Mike, did you want to hit and highlight any of these upcoming meetings?
Um, I think I'll wait till we get to D to talk about, uh, the week of March eighth.
Okay.
I, it's regarding the village ministry of search. Otherwise, everything else is, is the same as we talked about last, last week, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Yeah. So board members, just to make sure these meetings are on your schedule. All right. Going on to item eight, this is communication miscellaneous business. Uh, item A is we have a discussion of possible action regarding possibly amending the end dates of terms for the recent park board appointments.
So, so Jeannie, thi- this is what happened. I should have caught this sooner. I apologize for this. Joy and I started doing the old offices. We started checking the dates. And the light bulb came on and I went, wait a second, the appointments we just made, we're, we're all gonna expire in January. And everybody else's terms expire in April. And so that was gonna be confusing going forward. So I, I talked to Matt. Matt's gonna do a short ordinance. We're gonna tweak the term and, uh, limits or ending of these terms so that they end in, in April versus January. So that'll be coming back to the board in. On February first, so. Sorry about that. I should have caught that sooner.
I never even thought about that, so. All right. So, yeah, so, so a little bit of housekeeping will be coming back. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, item eight B, discussion of possible action regarding possible acquisition of one community bank building. At one oh one Alpine Parkway and the vacant lot at one fifty-three Alpine Parkway. Um, so we have a couple of items here. Uh, so, uh, first we have possible action regarding the accepting the proposal from the Sigma group to perform inspection of property. And then we may go into closed session at the end of the meeting if we need to discuss further. So, um. Mike, do you want to lead this off?
Yeah. So I see Steve pop back on the, on the meeting, his CP address. So Steve was kind enough to, uh, take some time and he asked a couple of, uh. Broker firms to, uh. Get some prices for the office building as well as the vacant lot in Alpine Parkway. And you can see him in Steve's, uh, email. And, uh, I think Steve's, um. And has said to us, and he's saying in the email, I'm gonna speak for him, that, you know, he's not saying this is what he's looking for. He just says it, these are some. Examples of what some brokers felt the, uh, the properties are, are worth. And, uh, so. Um. That's kind of a summary of the email. I, I, Jeannie, I think I'm gonna ask the board to go into closed session at the end so we can talk about this in, in, uh. In closed session and, and see if we wanna. Do what, what's called a letter of intent back to Steve and the bank. So, but we'll talk about that, I think, in, in closed session. And then, and then, uh, we've been working on this. So Jeff was good enough to, uh, get a proposal from an inspection firm. That, um, if the board wants to, we could, uh, have inspect, uh, the building. Steve is again, good, good enough and kind enough to allow us to do that. Uh, to walk through the building with an inspector and, and, you know, do our, uh, uh, our due diligence to review in the, the. Uh, property condition.
Excellent. Mike, um, can we talk in open session at all? Why, why are we even considering this?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I was just gonna. Yeah. Uh, so, so the village, uh, is looking at potentially, uh, moving the village hall to this property. To, to the, into the bank building. And, and then, uh, so let's say this, the, what would happen is if we would do that. Is then, then we have to then move the senior center into this building. Um. When the library is getting built and the, the, the current library building and the current senior center building will, will get knocked down. And that, that parcel will be redeveloped into a new senior center with residential apartments above it. But in the meantime, the seniors and it will have to get, get out of the way so that can happen. They would move into the, the, the current village hall. And we will, and we will move out to Alpine Parkway. And then the, the village at some point, we're gonna have to decide what to do with this building after the senior center was moved out of here.
Good. Yeah, thank, thank you. We've, we've been kind of do it, speculating a little bit behind the scenes, but I think it's important just to let the public know. In case they're wondering, why the heck are they buying a bank?
Yeah, we're not going into banking business. Thank you for clarifying that.
Not going into the banking business. We're, we're potentially interested in the building for, for municipal purposes.
And, and we recognize that, um. We'd have to renovate it into a, into a village hall and it would need some renovation. And so, um, those, those are the things we would need to talk about as we go forward. So.
Okay. So, um, so you're looking for a motion to accept the proposal?
Jeannie, I think Jerry's got a question for you.
Oh.
For us.
Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
Thank you. I, I have a question before we even get into this, uh. I assume this is called a property inspection. Is that maybe correctly?
Yeah, inspection. Yep. Inspection, yeah.
Yeah, um, why would we want that wait and make this a condition of the sale pending the arrival at a price?
Yeah.
Wouldn't we negotiate a price first and then making this a condition of a sale?
So Jeff and I feel that because the building is 15, 16 years old, it would make sense to have an inspection done now to go through. For example, you know, if, if I, I look at the roof, it looks fine to me, but if the roof would need to be repaired or replaced, you know, that could be, that could be a significant a cost that I think the board would should know about before, you know, we go forward with the, with the project or with the building.
And, and Jerry, we really want to get a, an idea. I mean, you know, we want to kind of an unbiased, I honestly, I believe the building's in, in really great shape. Um, you know, we've talked with Steve and representatives from the bank and, um, you know, when that building was built, it was, it was built as a long-term commitment um, out there on that property. And, um, but you know, I think as we go into this, we want to make sure that what we see, you know, like Mike, like what Mike said, kind of to the trained eye, we want them to be looking at things like the HVA sys, C systems, drainage roofs. Um, any kind of inherent problems with the building and that type of stuff that we would get to know. Um, so, you know, we actually thought about, you know, having this done even earlier, but have kind of held on to it until now because we think we're at a point where, you know, we're going to be looking at this further as a village.
Okay, so you're thinking spending $3,600 now and assuming that we're going to be able to come together on a price is a good gamble?
Well, it, it would. Yeah, here's, Matt, I'll just weigh in on this briefly as well, you know, and I, I, I understand your point, Jerry. Um, I mean, there are kind of two different ways to approach this. One is, as you suggest, get the land, get the property under contract first and build in an inspection contingency. And then, and then do the inspection later. Um, I think there are a couple of reasons that are suggesting, um, that an inspection first might be a reasonable way to proceed here. One is, um, a, at least it's been my experience that the, uh, you're in, you're in a somewhat different relationship and posture when you're, uh, i- if you have the information about the inspection now or before you make an offer, uh, that's a different position to be in than negotiating an offer, getting inspection report. And then at that point, you have to kind of negotiate essentially with the seller over what it means, what they're required to do to satisfy the contingency. And it's, it's a somewhat more complex problem in a way at that time than if you simply get the information upfront and factor it into your decision over um, how you want to proceed. And so I guess our thought was the price here of $3,600 on a, you know, a, a, a significant purchase like this seems like a, a, a relatively small risk. Uh, I mean, the risk is we spend the money and we decide, you know, not to pursue it or we decide to adjust price or, you know, in some way it informs the board's thinking. So there isn't necessarily, there isn't a right or a wrong answer to how to do this. There's just kind of two different approaches that, that may play out somewhat differently. And this is kind of where we landed as we talked it through. It's, it's again, it's not necessarily the, certainly not the only way to go. And it isn't necessarily the right way, but that's where we landed.
Hey, thank you, Matt. I'll accept the, uh, the, uh, intent of the discussion at this point.
All right. So I see, I see Amanda and then Cory. Never mind. I'm. Okay. No worries. All right. Cory, go ahead.
I'm just curious. Um, I see in Sigma's proposal, there was a work element two, which talks about, uh, you know, adaptive reuse, uh, um, kind of looking at our needs and how the building works for our needs. And I see that that says post-purchase, but I mean, before we decide if this is a really good fit for us, don't we need to know? You know, one, that is the space going to work for us? And two, how much is it going to cost to remodel that building to, to meet our uses? So I guess, timing on that, what are you thinking, Jeff and, and Mike?
Well, like, you know, with, with something like this, yeah. And when I talked to Sigma group about this and, and we were given this group as a recommendation from, uh, a local, uh, real estate agent that we, that works a lot in our area here. Um, you know, a proposal like this looks at, first of all, we're asking just, you know, red flags with the building, the structure and everything like that. And then secondly, we could, I mean, at a later date, retain Sigma to help us make those estimates um, on, you know, and like work with us and say, okay, what kind of space do you need? Um, we already have a pretty good idea about that, but, uh, they would, you know, help give us estimates on what it would cost to do any kind of renovations or remodeling that would be necessary to accommodate it as a village hall. Does that answer your question, Cory?
Um.
Kind of.
Well, those costs for remodeling, that's in work element two, which is to be determined and looks like it's post-purchase. Don't you think that we should go through that process, I guess, before we, we make the purchase?
We can't, I mean, we can, but I think, you know, that's part of, it, it'd be kind of like, you know, when, when you're buying a house, um, you're buying a house, you're getting the inspection. Um, you're deciding what, I mean, you've already kind of determined whether that house fits your family or not. And then, you know, you're looking at then later, how much you're going to invest into that new house or into that used house. That's the way I look at it, but I, I don't envision, um, I think in the timing of which the bank wants to move ahead with this and move ahead with their projects, um, I think it's going to be a lot of parallel path type of stuff. And, and one of those parallel paths will be us determining um, to what extent, you know, things need to be modified at that facility.
This, this is Jeff, could, this is Matt, if I could just ask a question to your, so to tie together what you're, you're saying and what, what I hear Cory saying, it, are we in a position, I, I agree that we shouldn't, I agree with Cory, we shouldn't make an offer unless we know this building will, so will fit our family, as you put it.
Right.
It'll work. So I guess the question, what I'm hearing from you is there's already, uh, enough information to know that the building would, would meet the village's needs. So this work element two here that would happen later, I hear you describe it as not, uh, determining whether it would meet our needs or not, but determining, you know, what maybe, you know, do we want to, do we want to have a nicer bathroom or something like that in the house kind of thing?
Well, there will be, I mean, let's just, I mean, since we all know what building we're talking about and everything like that, that, you know, the improvements that are going to have to be made, obviously, we have to create a kind of a secure front area, um, so that, you know, we have offices, um, separate office and, and workspaces separate from what public access would be. And that's on the main floor. Um, you know, otherwise, you know, most of the offices and everything there can be, can accommodate uh, everybody right off the bat. The, the main changes would be with the upstairs and how we would incorporate that into a boardroom, uh, type of area. Um, that's going to be, um, and, and that whole area is, has been designed initially as a, as a kind of a wide open spaces. Is that correct, Steve? Okay, good. I'm giving you a nod there. So, you know, accommodating it as a village board area with, um, possible boardrooms, uh, side boardroom access and all that type of stuff. The, uh, audio visual, everything like that is, is pretty straightforward. Um, but I, you know, I don't think there's any, I, I guess, you know, when we discussed this at an earlier time, um, I think we've gone at this and looked at this as, this is a building that I think could be very reasonably and responsibly be modified and accommodate, uh, village hall for a very long time period. And that's, and, and I think that's kind of been the consensus of anyone who's, who's gone through it. Um, so that's why I'm not overly concerned of the, what would be the phase two or the, the step two costs, um, at least in, um, negotiating, uh, you know, a buy-sell agreement.
All right. Uh, Randy and then Jerry.
Oh, gee, just a quick, I, I, I understand that typically when you buy a house, you, you put in an offer and then you have the inspection done. And we're kind of doing it differently here, but I, I like, actually, I like the idea of us looking at it. We've all, some of us have gone through the building on tour. Um, I like the idea of us making sure that it's, that it's in, in good shape as it looks. Uh, and for me, for a relatively small amount of money, to be assured that it is in good shape before we put in the offer. That's just my, my two cents.
Jerry, did you have another thought?
I do. Well, I actually have a question for Mike or for Jeff. Um, what is the amount in the capital plan for New Village Hall?
Six million dollars.
Six million dollars. And, uh,
We think that's an underestimation for a brand new village hall.
Yeah, I mean, that was, because it was like 24, 20, 2024, 2025, that was a placeholder, you know, that we.
We think it might be more in the scale of four to, well, six to eight.
Yeah. Yeah.
Million. Okay. And so when I look at these, uh, estimates or these proposed, these proposed values from, uh, Steve Piattar, the highest one is $4.6 million.
So, so Jerry, just remember, we're going to go into closed session to talk about numbers at the end of the meeting.
I know, I know, I know. I'm, I'm not going to mention any nor, any more numbers. I'm just, I'm just, um, I guess I'm thinking out loud is what I'm doing.
Okay.
And how much would you? Well, I guess, stop that, Jared.
Yeah, I, I would just caution Jerry, I mean, because you know, we have producer responsibility to talk about things at the right. No, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to cut you off, but I would just, I'm just cautioning you because I think I know where you're going with this. So.
Okay.
Plus Steve's listening.
Yeah, he's like.
I know he is.
I see him. He's leaning forward and listening with intent.
I know. I've got him on my screen. I can.
I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions of me. I'm happy to do whatever I can to be of service.
I bet you'd go into closed session with us, wouldn't you, Steve?
Only if I was invited, Jerry, only if I was.
I don't know. I think, didn't, didn't I hear, did I see Steve, like maybe think about, I don't know, maybe donating this, this building?
We already tried that.
The goodwill offering, I'm just throwing that out there. Steve. Uh huh.
You know, President Carpenter, I appreciate you reminding me of that.
Okay. Always happens. Yeah. All right. So, um, would someone then, uh, like to make a motion then to accept this proposal from the Sigma group to perform the inspection of the property?
Jeannie, I will.
All right. So we have a motion by Glash, a second by Jacobson. Any further discussion? Yes. Go ahead, Cory.
Um, I think in order for us to know what we want to spend on a building, I think we'll need to have some broad sense of how much it's going to cost to renovate. You know, using the house analogy that, that Jeff used, you know, yes, we fit in the space, but is it going to cost us $2 million, $1 million, $6 million to renovate? You know, so.
Cory, I guess I would say the same thing. Like I said to Jerry, I think we should talk about some of this in closed session.
Well, what I'm getting at with this proposal is should we include a component to evaluate some of that?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what the answer of how much it's going to cost. I'm just saying it's tough to make a decision when you don't know if something's going to be in your budget or not.
I, I have a solution to your Cory's question. Uh, why don't we vote on that in closed session?
No, we're going to, it's, this is, we're going to vote on the, the inspection of the property in open session.
I mean, I guess.
If you guys don't want to vote, if you guys don't want to do it, vote no.
Yeah. I mean, you can always go back and amend the contract with them at some point if we, if we want to do that. So all we're doing, all we're just asking for just an initial inspection of the property.
Or you could table it, um, and, and I, I don't know if that'll be a problem from a timing standpoint, if this is table till the next meeting.
Right. That was, that'd be February 1st. So, so Jeff, you got this on December 31st and they were saying they were going to get this back by February 5th. Obviously, that's not going to.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's about, it's about 15, 15 working days. I mean, they, they're, they're used to working with, um, you know, situations like this. And, and, uh, I think if we would cut them loose, you know, we'd ask for, you know, what date they'd be willing to get it back to us. And it's all, you know, it's, it's whatever the board would want to do with it.
Yep.
I mean, to me, this, this makes sense. The first thing is to, to inspect the property. Is it in good enough shape for us to even consider it? If it's not in good enough shape for us to consider it, we're done. Um, then the next, if it is good enough shape, then the second, second step is to, is to talk prices, talk, start talking remodeling numbers. So, I mean, Cory, again, you can vote no if you don't want to, if you don't want to go.
Going to say, Jeannie, I completely agree. We need to do step one B. So there's no reason why we can't just vote on that portion of it now.
Great. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. All right. So then we will go into closed session. Yes, Steve, are you waving or did you want to talk?
I appreciate you. I still have a question to ask. So is it the, is it the pleasure of the village board that I be back here after the closed session at the end of the meeting? What would you like of me?
Steve, oh, okay. Answer that, Jeannie.
Yeah, go ahead.
The board will go into closed session and I will get, I'll, I'll, I'll get back to you either tomorrow or Wednesday. Give, give you an update.
Thank you very much. My family thanks you because I will go see them now.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. So going on, then the item C, uh, we have an update from Police Chief Pakenkoff regarding the theft of autos in the village and the steps the village residents could take to help prevent future incidents. Welcome, chief.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak about this. I, we had a, a for our community, a rather large amount of, uh, criminal acts occur in a short period of time that certainly had our community concerned. So, uh, in case any of the village board members or anyone listening had not read the, uh, press releases yet, I'll cover those first. Uh, the first press release we sent out, uh, was, uh, related to the auto thefts and burglaries. And when I say burglaries in this, in these cases, um, they were either because a car was stolen out of a garage, which constituted, constitutes a burglary or uh, someone went into the residence to get the keys and steal a vehicle. Um, the Oregon Police Department investigated four cases of vehicles being stolen. All four vehicles, uh, have now been recovered. There have also been several cases where a group of individuals attempted to steal autos but were interrupted. The activity occurred in the following areas, East Richards Road, Saratoga Circle, Rinpoche Lane, Sumac Street, One Word Way, Raven Court and Bergamot Boulevard. No one was injured during these incidents. Uh, the suspects targeted open garages and unlocked vehicles. The vehicles that have been taken consisted of the following factors. Unlocked with the vehicles, I'm sorry, and with the keys in the vehicle, the vehicle was running with the keys in the vehicle. Or the door was unlocked to the garage entrance to the residence and the keys were gained. Um, and this was when the garage door was left open. Our investigative unit, the Oregon Police Department, has identified four juveniles as suspects in the auto thefts that have recently occurred. Three of the four juveniles who have been identified were taken into custody. The fourth suspect has been identified and the Oregon Police Department is working with other law enforcement partners to apprehend the juvenile. Uh, the tentative charges will consist of burglary and operating motor vehicle without orders consent. Uh, pursuant to the directive of the Wisconsin Supreme Court as found in Supreme Court Rule 20, uh, chapter 3.6, trial publicity, um, you are advised that a charge is merely an accusation and the defendants are presumed innocent until proven guilty. Um, as the auto thefts were going on, uh, we were made aware of a weapons offense that occurred, I would say approximately a week later. Um, on January 12th, 2021, at approximately 7:45 PM, uh, Oregon officers responded to the 800 block of Raven Court for a weapons offense. The information provided was that an adult male approached a parked vehicle occupied by four juveniles. The reporting party indicated the adult male pointed a handgun at the occupied vehicle and yelled at occupants to leave the area. After a thorough investigation into the incident, the adult male was cited for disorderly conduct while armed. Pursuant to the directive of the Wisconsin Supreme Court as found in Supreme Court Rule Chapter twenty-three point six, Trial Publicity, you are advised that a charge is merely an accusation and the defendants are presumed innocent until proven guilty. With that said, um, I wanted to discuss the reaction many have had regarding the auto thefts. Uh, the Oregon Police Department was able to make a significant amount of progress on the auto thefts in a short period of time due to the cooperation and assistance from the victims and others in the community. We'd like to thank those who were able to provide information and video that helped in identifying the individuals involved in the auto thefts. In my eighteen years of working in law enforcement, I have seen victims of crime uh, to include burglary and auto thefts that go through a significant, these victims go through a significant amount of trauma. The victims have a lot of fear of future similar incidents. Uh, many people who are victims of these sort of crimes cannot sleep in their homes afterwards. They worry about being outside of their residence and overall, the sense of feeling safe in their own home has been taken away from them. I was made aware of one post on social media in particular, which involved a victim of one of the recent burglaries where she put information out about what happened to her, admitting she had left the door unlocked in hopes to prevent her fellow community members from not making the same mistake she made. Uh, everyone makes mistakes, but it was very disappointing to see several people criticize her for not locking her door and putting her through further trauma. The weapons offense, um, evolved into many strong feelings being posted on social media. And I was asked to address those discouraging vigilante type comments on Facebook as well as behaviors. What occurred in that weapons offense, I talked with you about. Uh, those type of acts simply aren't unacceptable and compromise all of our community members feeling safe. I'm a believer in actions being stronger than words. What happened in the weapon, weapons offense was behavior that is unacceptable and the Oregon Police Department has held that person accountable. Further, the Oregon Police Department will not be caught in the middle of a social media debate. We understand community members may be upset with, with what others are posting on social media. Uh, when the Oregon Police Department has received calls regarding these concerns, uh, we need to determine if there is an illegal, illegal act involved. We have to be mindful that people have the right to freedom of speech. And unless an illegal act is involved, we recommend the concerned citizen contact social media platforms as they are in control of that platform. So subscribers of the platform can report abuse or inform the social media organizer of issues outside of a law violation. The Oregon Police Department has continued to adapt to the changes that occurred in twenty twenty and continue in twenty twenty-one. As social media has become more of a hornet's nest of negativity and attacks, the Oregon Police Department has changed our practice of how we are going to release information to our community. We will no longer be using social media sites such as Facebook and Twitter to share press releases. For the time being, we will make an announcement on social media when a new press release has been posted and provide information on where to find that press release. All press releases will be posted on our Oregon Police Department website under press releases. The only information our staff will post on our social media sites excluding an emergency situation will be positive messages such as to announce community events, promotions, projects we are working on with other community partners, reminders to lock your vehicles, et cetera. We are currently researching other non-social media platforms that may work. We have become a society that gains knowledge through social media, sometimes accurate, sometimes inaccurate. And so quickly, community, community members expect response and reactions. Uh, the Oregon Police Department will continue to navigate through those difficult times and to respond to these concerns carefully and thoughtfully. I, I know there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook, so I just wanted to first address these very concerning incidents that occurred. Um, how we have handled them, but also how we are gonna try to lead by example in communicating with our community in a more positive, productive environment.
Thank you, chief. Um, I, I have a question with the juveniles, are I think one of the, one of the concerns in the community is that we're, we're wondering, what are these kids doing with the vehicles? Are they, do they have nefarious purposes? Are they going for joyrides? Something, if we had more information like that, it might be better.
Yes, so the information I have about the ones that have occurred in the village is it's simply to drive the vehicle at fast rates of speed around the county. And typically, we either find the vehicle abandoned in just a random area or we find it has been involved in a traffic accident. And again, is abandoned and we have to contact the owner and let them know about the crash. So it's more, in my opinion, of a, um, crime of opportunity with no gain other than yeah, riding around and driving fast.
Hmm.
Yes, go ahead, Randy.
Um, chief, so I, I, I heard a couple of things that maybe at least for me that could, could, could help me. One of the things is, I heard you say, keep the garage doors closed was one thing. Don't, don't let the cars running in the driveway. Uh, make sure that the cars are, are locked. Um, and, and, and one of the things I do is make sure I have outside lights on. I don't know if that, that's gonna help or not, but, um, so a couple of things that you mentioned, chief, I think are some things that we can do to kind of stop this from happening to us.
Yes, and, um, extra things we're doing for our community is, um, anytime we find a garage door open, our night shift is making contact with that resident owner and leaving a flyer. And also, uh, they're driving around neighborhoods looking for vehicles where the dome lights are on, maybe they have been gone through. So we try to get to those owners as soon as possible. And, uh, lastly, putting out constant reminders on our social media, uh, to lock vehicles.
And, and chief, if I could just say one more, is lock the car in the garage, correct?
I, I would do both.
Yeah.
And I certainly wouldn't leave anything valuable on the vehicle.
Okay, thank you, chief.
All right, that was a very good report. Thank you, chief. Uh, other questions from board members? Chief, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and I don't, I don't know if you can answer this, but I'm gonna go ahead and guess at the ages of these kids. They probably don't even have driver's licenses, do they?
I don't believe so. Um, I, I will also say that, um, it's not just our community catching some of these individuals involved. So I, I do feel it's a rather large group. So just because we have caught, um, and identified most of the ones involved in the Oregon incident, it does not mean there won't be more to come. We are certainly out there actively looking as well, but, um, uh, just reminding your family members and other members in the community to continue to lock their doors, it, it will be a lot of help.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Uh, item D, status of village administrator search.
So, Jeanie, I think I'll probably have Kevin and Chris, or at least one of them on the next board agenda. There's, there's a couple of procedure or, or items in the process that I, I need to talk to, or they need to talk to the board about. But one of the questions they have for the board today was, we're trying to secure a, a room, uh, at a restaurant for the interviews of the week of March eighth. And I was wanting to get, maybe look at your calendars and see if, if like March eleventh and March twelfth, which is a Thursday and Friday would work for the interviews, or would you want to actually do a Saturday morning interview? Is it, because I'm gonna call, I'm gonna talk to Kevin and Chris this morning, or I'm sorry, this week, excuse me, and, um, and then we could also, then Kenny could go ahead and reserve the room as well. So would you prefer to do a Saturday morning or would you want to do like the Friday afternoon, evening slash, uh, interview? Do you have any preference on that?
Yeah, Jerry.
Um, Mike, how many hours are you anticipating this may take?
Um, well, I don't know how many finalists are going to be selected, but let's, there could be up to six, I believe, so it could be. I, I, I would think at least five or six hours.
And then I'd like it to be split into two different sessions because at the end of a six-hour session, I'm not going to be as sharp as I was at the beginning. Of course, maybe that's more, maybe that's my normal state, I don't know. You know, but, uh.
I mean, I mean, typically you would do is, like, you would do a Thursday and Friday where Thursday, the, the candidates would come into town and they would meet with the, uh, uh, maybe meet with the department heads and get a tour. And so I think those are all the things that the, that Kevin and Chris have to talk to the board about. Are we gonna do those types of things? Or, or are we going to, um, just have one day, like, say that Friday where the candidates come in, uh, they get a tour, they get a writing exercise and they get interviewed and, and it's kind of rotation. And, and we did that, like, with the police chief candidate a couple of years ago, we, I think Jeanie may recall, we did something like that, so, I mean, you know, should we just shoot to do that? You want to like, just put like all day on March twelfth to do that? Is, is that something that people could, the board members could do?
Uh, that, I, I can make that happen. I'll, I'll start.
Hmm. Okay.
Is anyone uh, not available on March twelfth?
I, I'm sorry.
I was just asking board members if anyone was available on March twelfth. I'm not seeing anybody, so, yeah, let's, let's shoot for Friday, March twelfth.
Okay, I think we'll reserve the room and then when I talk to, to Chris and Kevin this week, I'll tell them that. And then, and like I said, I think they need to come in and talk in more detail with you with, with, about the procedure, the two-day or the writing exercise and things like that Kevin mentioned, so. Good, that helps a lot, thank you.
All right. Let's bring it on my calendar as a whole.
So, so I, I would, I'll tell Kenny to, to reserve that and then we'll see if that works.
Excellent, all right. Did we get food? Will you feed us?
Yes.
All right.
That's another reason to have that at a restaurant.
I am motivated by food.
But only snacks, we're cutting back on our budget.
Okay, fine.
Sorry, just kidding, just kidding.
All right, oh, goody. Uh, oh, we already did this. I was like wastewater treatment again, but we already did that. Excellent, so exciting. Okay, so now item F. This is a discussion on a possible action regarding Resolution twenty-one dash oh seven. This is a resolution regarding your recommendation from the Planning Commission to the village board to initiate an amendment to the Oregon Urban Services Area including forty point seven acres of property owned by the Hofer Living Trust located on the east and west sides of County Highway MM. And the parcel numbers are listed there to accommodate phases two and phases three of the Autumn Ridge Residential Subdivision. So we have a recommended motion to approve Resolution twenty-one oh seven. Someone like to make that motion. So I'll, I'll go ahead and make that motion since it's coming from the planning commission, something like the second, second by Jacobson, thank you. All right, so we have stuff in our packet on this. Um.
Elise, you want to show the board the, the map, please?
Wait, I'll say the map. That was very helpful of planning commission, there we go.
Yes. And I, I can't remember if we got this to the village board previously with the, kind of the last version of the concept map, but this is the latest and, um, I remember this. This is not the latest map, but planning, well, we'll make sure this gets updated. There's three additional parcels here. We realized the park dedication, uh, requirements were a little outdated, so we let the developer know of that change and they rearranged a couple of things here, but this is just formalizing the village board's approval to proceed with the CARPSY process to amend our urban service area. And that hearing is, I believe, February eleventh. And final vote, March eleven.
And, and tomorrow night, Elise, Jeff and I are going to go to the Town of Oregon Special Planning Commission meeting to talk about this with their plant commission, right, Elise?
Correct.
Well, that should be fun for you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any discussion on this so that we can keep this moving forward? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, so item G, we review of building permits, connection impact fees. Cash.
So, so Jeanie, I'll just make one general comment about this is that I think maybe in the middle of the year, mid, you know, sometime in the summer, Elise and I were starting to get a little worried about the lack of billing permits, but as you can see, we actually had a pretty good year. We had forty-five uh, single-family permits compared to fifty-three. And so I think I've always told the board that if we can get between forty and fifty for a net new construction, that's good. So for us to be going through this COVID pandemic, the situation and still have these many permits, that's a good sign for us.
Mm-hmm. Any questions on those numbers? There. All right, item H, uh, this is a discussion on possible action regarding Resolution twenty-one dash oh six. This is the resolution approving an employee-paid COVID nineteen leave policy. Uh, so, uh, do we have a motion to approve this? Motion by Jacobson, do the second, second by Stitch. Any questions on this? This is following federal guidelines of the, the eighty hours per employee, right?
Yeah, I, I get on this call with about twenty or twenty-five other administrators on a monthly basis, and I would say the majority of them are since the federal program expired at the end of the year, most of them are doing this, knowing that the, obviously the virus is not going away and we already had some people that had to use this program and so, um, that's why we're proposing it to the board. We, we think we're gonna continue to need have, have people take off time because of COVID-related situations.
Yeah, I mean, the last thing that you want to do is to have someone think that they have to come to work.
That's exactly, great point. Yeah, we want to, right, Jeanie.
That's the last thing you want to have.
We definitely do not, we want to encourage people that if they feel like they have it, they don't, I don't want them to come to work and contaminate the workplace, you know, I think overall we've done a pretty good job, so thank you for mentioning, that's a good point, yeah.
I'm all in favor of this resolution. Any questions on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for that.
For sure. Item I, this is the twenty twenty Oregon Affordable Housing Report is on the village's webpage. Elise went over this a little bit with planning commission and, uh, warned the planning commission that she's gonna have a more, uh, detailed report in the coming months and perhaps have assignments for planning commission, I believe. Which we're all very excited about. Uh, item J, uh, there'll be one more in-person, uh, collection day for the twenty twenty tax collection that will be Friday, January twenty-ninth from seven thirty AM to four thirty PM. If you absolutely positively feel the need to pay your taxes in person, that's the day to do it. Otherwise, put them in the big, uh, black box in the parking lot or, uh, mail them. Anything that, uh, we reduce face-to-face contact during a pandemic. All right, we have no report of committees, we have no minutes requiring action, we have no unfinished business, we have no new business based on future agenda items. So I think we are ready for item fourteen. Uh, so this is, the board may meet in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen point eight five current one, current E, to consider its bargaining position in connection with the possible acquisition of one community bank building at one zero one Alpine Parkway and the vacant lot at one fifty-three Alpine Parkway. And we will adjourn from closed session. So I need a motion to go into closed session, please. Motion by Balik, second by Glish, and I believe we need a roll call to do this. So Penny, whenever you're ready, do you want to do a roll call to go into closed session?
Balig?
Balig is yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yeah.
Glish?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Stitch?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, uh, if you're not on the board, we would ask you to, uh, um, hang up from the call and we will go into closed session and we will adjourn from closed session. hang up from the call, and we will go into closed session, and we will adjourn from closed session.